...as with Edmonton Mayor Don Iverson and Las Vegas Mayor Carolyn Goodman as they lead their respective communities during this very difficult time. Let's all continue to work towards a more tolerant and peaceful world.
Approval minutes, September 11th, 2017, Committee of the Hall. Moved by Mayor Jaworski, seconded by Counselor Henry, all those in favor. That's carried unanimously, I think, Counselor Durrell. Yep. Thank you. Delegations, we have none. Presentations, there's none. Consent motion, there's none. Staff reports, one A, 2018, proposed council and standing committee meeting schedule, moved by Counselor Whaley, seconded by Counselor Burke. Any questions, counsel? I only had one, and it's related to planning applications, because I see that our meeting schedule is really short and we're not meeting in July. And because we might fall ourselves into lame duck into September, I do worry that we may slow down the business of the city by not having any planning meetings before September. Now, I know that a planning application doesn't require lame duck, but it's still sometimes a dicey one, and so I just, I don't know, like, I kind of looking to my colleagues on counsel on that.
Thank you, Chair. So, at this time, we have not scheduled any meetings in July, but that doesn't mean that we can't call one if needed. So, there won't be a slowdown. If it's necessary to hold a meeting for any planning applications, we will do that. And we'll certainly work with that division to make sure that we're keeping an eye on how many are coming forward and ensuring we have time scheduled.
Okay. It would be helpful to have a report maybe in May, so that we have a sense as a counsel that we aren't the ones holding up work. Does that make sense? Yep. All right. So, it's been duly moved and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. The next staff report is item B, condominium conversion application, 30 CDM-17408-110 University Avenue West. It's IPPW report 2017-061, prepared by Wendy Fisher. And I'm not sure, Wendy, did you have a presentation? Or are you, okay, you're just here to answer questions if they come up? Okay, thank you. So, at this time, I'll turn it to counsel for either a motion or questions for staff. Moved by Counselor Henry, seconded by Mayor Jaworski, Counselor Whaley.
Unfortunately, I'm unable to support this motion, even though staff did a marvelous job, and I repeat, a marvelous job about putting so many conditions on the building. That's much appreciated, and the work you did was stellar, but I have to, my vote will be a protest vote. Last week, we heard about an apartment building on University Avenue that went from four and five bedroom, and it requests for it to become a one and two bedroom. This one is to have a four and five bedroom rental taken right off the market and go into a new classification, sold as condominiums. For me, it tells me that the era of high-density university student warehouses seems to be over, has lost its charm in the community, and all I can say is, thanks goodness. Students seem to have more of an interest in privacy than what they were able to get in these high-density units that nobody seemed to like. Students don't seem to like it, they don't want to rent there. Staff have, you know, stated on many occasions that they don't like them either, and I certainly hear lots of people in the community talk about how, frankly, how ugly they are. So, I don't think the developers should have, you know, this losing combination of being in these high-density student warehouses, suddenly have the opportunity to force them on a potentially unsuspecting market. People don't know what they're getting into, thinking that these condominium units are going to be easily converted into other uses. I don't think they are. Therefore, I just can't support this.
Thank you, Counselor Whaley. Any other comments on this application? Seeing none, all in favor? Those contrary-minded? Counselor Whaley? And that's carried. We are now into item seven, informal public meeting. This is an informal public meeting to consider zoning by law amendment, application Z-1717 6965083, Canada Incorporated, for 209 to 217 King Street South, 11 John Street West, and 176 to 180 Caroline Street South. There will be no decisions made tonight. Counsel and the public are seeing this application for the first time. Counsel is looking for feedback from interested parties with respect to this application. Tonight's comments will be taken into consideration in developing a staff position on this application, and a staff report will be considered by counsel during a formal public meeting at a future meeting. All property owners within 120 meters of the subject lands and anyone who signs the registry will receive notice of the formal public meeting. Anybody who wants further notice of this application, including the formal public meeting and passage of any bylaw, should sign the appropriate registry located on the desk at the rear of the council chambers. If there's more than one registry, please make sure you are signing the appropriate one. The planner will now provide a brief overview of the application. Trevor, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Mayor Jaworski, members of counsel, ladies and gentlemen. Application Z-1717 concerns a series of properties at the southwest corner of John Street West and King Street South, owned by a Canada Incorporated company, numbered company. They are represented here this evening by Carol Weeby of MHBC and Markville Mayor of SRM Architects. To orient counsel to the location of the property, highlighted in red with John Street West in this location, King Street South, we have Allen Street, and in between Allen and John on King Street is the LRT stop, the Bauer Building here in this location, 144 Park, the under-construction 155 Caroline, the Sun Life parking structure, additional Sun Life-related parking and generator station, Sun Life Office Building itself. We have a couple of six-story buildings on the east side of King Street South in this location, and then the red building in this location. Beyond that is the Mary Allen neighborhood, and then west of Park Street is the Uptown West neighborhood. This is a little bit closer look at the property. There are five structures on the property. Two facing King Street, and then three towards the rear of the property. This is actually public road up to about this location. Caroline Street South ends here, and then after that point, it's a driveway entrance into the Sun Life building. The applicant intends to remove four of those five structures. They do intend to retain 217 King Street South, which is the most southerly building, and I will allude to that a little bit further in the presentation. In terms of the official plan, the property is zoned commercial. It's part of our Uptown mixed-use designation. It is part of the Uptown or primary node and is designated high-density, and this schedule in the bottom left is our height and density schedule. So, the darker colors here are designated for up to 81 meters. As we head out to the light yellow or orange, they are for 20 meters, and the blue is 12 meters. Apartments are permitted in this designation, and the maximum density is 750 bedrooms per hectare. In terms of the current zoning on the property, it is zoned multiple residents 25, which would allow an apartment building up to 25 stories. Density in our bylaw is measured in units per hectare, although our official plan measures it in bedrooms per hectare, and the maximum height is either 25 stories or 75 meters. Surrounding the property are a number of different zones with a mixture of commercial, industrial, and residential uses. And then, as you head further into the Uptown West or Mary Allen neighborhoods, zones that would be associated with lower-density development. In terms of the actual application, they are not asking to change the zone, but rather to add site-specific provisions to the existing MR25 zone, primarily to switch the density measurement from units per hectare to bedrooms per hectare, as per our official plan, and then to go beyond that 750 bedrooms per hectare, up to 903 bedrooms per hectare, subject to density bonusing, to decrease the flankage yard, which in this case is King Street, from the required 5 to 0.3 meters, and that is for the underground and above-ground parking structure. Similarly, the side yard setback that abuts the driveway entrance into the Sun Life would be reduced from 3 to 1.464 meters, again, for the parking structure. They wish to reduce the parking from one space per unit to 0.89 spaces per unit, which equates to, for this project, 32 space deficiency. To decrease the amount of surface parking from 10% to 3.6%, our MR25 zone requires that 10% of the required parking be located outside of either an underground or above-ground structure, and they propose 3.6% instead of 10. And as counsel's aware, the MR zone requires 30% landscape open space, and the applicant is requesting that some landscaping on the parking structure itself be allowed to contribute towards that minimum requirement. In terms of the proposal, it's two towers, 21 and 22 stories, with a total of 307 units and 468 bedrooms. As I noted earlier, the applicant does intend to retain and restore 217 King Street South, which is a listed property on the Heritage Register, and incorporate that building into the development. In terms of the concept site plan at this stage, we have John Street at the top of the image, King Street at the right of the image. The entrance to the property is from John Street, and you would go either directly into the parking structure or into those eight surface parking spaces. There are three other surface parking spaces at the back, near the Sun Life driveway entrance. The two towers are situated in opposite corners, with the first tower facing the intersection of John and King Street. And then, the retained 217 King Street South structure is incorporated into the development. It would have to be lifted and removed from the building, or from the property, as the development was constructed, and then it would be replaced after the underground and structured parking is built, and it would be connected to the two towers, as we can see from that breezeway location. And then, the sort of hatching, if you will, is a mixture of either private or public amenity space. So, the space located between the restored structure and King Street is proposed as public amenity space. So, it would function as a public park, in that the public would have access to the space, to use it as though it were a park owned by the city. However, the applicant would retain ownership and would maintain the space. Behind the structure, so behind the different hatching, if you will, and in behind the structure and in between the two buildings, is private amenity space. A couple of views of the building itself. The first top left is a view from King Street, so we can note, one of the first things we might note is that the grade does change as we go from John Street towards the Sun Life property. This is the Sun Life garden area, next to its heritage structure, the Sun Life office tower in the background. And then, we can see in shadow the heritage structure that's proposed to be retained, and then the two towers of 21 and 22 stories. And in the bottom corner, we have the view from the corner, so the main entrance to that first tower at the corner of King and John. In terms of submitted studies and reports, there's a number of them, the planning report, an urban design and shadow study, a heritage impact assessment, which looked at not only 217 King Street South and retaining that structure, but also the impact of this proposed development on the adjacent designated Sun Life Office Building, a noise study to look at the impacts of road noise on this development, as well as HVAC equipment from this development and surrounding properties, a transportation impact study, parking justification letter, a functional servicing report, which looked at the capacity of our infrastructure to accommodate the development, as well as a preliminary review of stormwater management, a geotechnical investigation, because they are going underground, and the water table issues that we encounter frequently in the Uptown, and finally, concept, site plan, and building elevations. In terms of staff's review, we will be reviewing in detail those reports and plans. We'll be looking at the site-specific requests that the applicant is making to change the MR25 zone, the design of not only the buildings, but the site itself, and how that public amenity space may function, how accessible it will be, the bonusing that the applicant, the items and community benefits that the applicant's proposing in lieu of the density bonusing. We will be reviewing those items. Heritage preservation, so in addition to reviewing it ourselves, we'll be consulting with the committee in terms of the impact on the structure adjacent, owned by Sun Life, as well as the 217 building that will be retained, and finally, any other comments that are generated through the public and agency commenting period. Thank you, Chair Freeman.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Counselor Whaley.
Thank you for your presentation. It's interesting to consider the area right around the Allen Ion stop. It's already fairly built out, built up, and as we speak, we've got two buildings under construction, and taking these two new buildings into construction, the block is going to have an extra 93 stories. Pretty incredible. Kind of gives you a vision of what the power of the ion is in terms of changing the built form of our community. So, with these 93 stories coming online, it's interesting to hear that in this particular application, there's such a huge reduction in parking, especially surface parking, going from 10% to 3.6%. What we hear from people who live in the area, from people who have business right around the Ion, is that parking already is a nightmare, a really big problem, and taking, going from 10 to 3.6% is a really big drop. So, what do you think in terms of, I don't know if this is an answer for this particular application or not, but the block itself, with 93 stories coming up, is going to have such tremendous pressure on getting people there in cars. What's the answer?
Through you, Chair Freeman. I'm not sure I'll fully answer that question, but I think what I wanted to point out is that the 10% down to 3.6% only equates to the parking spaces outside the structure. So, they're actually asking, the broader parking measurement would be the one space per unit requirement, and they're going down to 0.89 spaces per unit. So, overall, for a 307-unit project, that results in 32 fewer spaces than they would be required to do if they didn't ask for the change. So, the scale of the request, from 10 to 3.6%, does sound fairly dramatic, but because it only really relates to those spaces that are outside the structure, it's a much lesser number. One of the things that we would be looking at as we review this development, as we do with a number of other projects that have come before counsel recently, is how does this compare to the parking requirements in our comprehensive draft bylaw? And where would it stack up in terms of what the new bylaw would require versus what they're proposing? So, that will be a stick by which we also measure this project.
Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you. Through the chair, a couple of questions. On the public space, or the space that's accessible to the public, what gives it permanence? What tools would the city use to give it permanence?
Through you, Chair Freeman, to Mayor Jaworski. I think we would, if counsel was interested in pursuing it, we would be looking for an easement that granted the public access in perpetuity.
Okay. Second question, and this is the right diagram, I believe. You mentioned the parking structure in terms of its, how close it is to the, to King Street, I think, .3 meters. Maybe either on this one, or maybe the artist's diagram, show me where that comes into play. Is all the parking underground, or is there some podiums parking?
Well, because of the grade of the property, the structure appears underground in certain parts of the property, and it pops out of the ground in other parts of the property. So, if you were walking along King Street, you would see that it would come out of the ground between John and the back of the property, but then it would be at grade again at the back of the property. So, if we look in this location, and Ms. Weeby may allude or elaborate on my answer, but there isn't at-grade access from the sidewalk here, because the property slopes to that extent. But if I was to enter the public space, if you will, here, I would have to take stairs, because the structure itself is elevated above ground. So, it's a mixture of buried parking and slightly above-grade parking.
Okay. And then, just for further clarity, so like, the second, or the first story of the towers, people are living in those, or sorry, there amenity space or space for people, is not parking?
There's a mixture of amenity space, lobbies, entrances and service areas.
But it's people's space, not car's space?
The car space is, I'm going to let Ms. Weeby elaborate a little bit further on that.
Yeah. Well, I'm good with that.
But there is a mixture of structured parking throughout the site, as well as underground parking.
Thank you.
Counselor Henry, and then Counselor Durrell. Okay, Counselor Durrell.
Okay. So, my first question is, and Mayor Jaworski mentioned it to you through you, Chair Freeman, apologize. On King Street, what is the view of the people that are walking by? So, I see that there's some, I don't, I'm curious about what this elevation is and what it looks like.
So, this is the...
I'm pointing. Can you tell what I'm pointing at?
This is the view from, yeah, from King Street. So, we're at grade at the intersection of John and King, and then, as we move towards the back of the property, we can see that the structure is visible along King Street, and then, when we get to the back of the property again, it's at grade again. So, there is a wall there that would support the structure.
So, there is a wall? If you're walking on the sidewalk, there's a wall beside you, and how high is that wall?
The wall would differ in height, but Ms. Weeby, yeah. Ms. Weeby will provide you with the detail of how high it is at its highest point.
Okay. Thank you. What kind of, so I'm going to kind of go all over the place here, but are there any, one of the things that we're hearing more and more about, and I'm hearing it every day around people moving into Uptown, are they have electronic vehicles, and these buildings are not putting electronic chargers? Are there electric chargers as part of that? How is, at the city, can we ensure that every building has that?
Through you, Chair Freeman. I believe there are proposed changes to the Condominium Act, and perhaps even the Building Code, that will require those types of installations in the future. So, it may be that when this building, if it gets approved by counsel, that those, that legislation may align such that they will be required to do so.
Right. But if they're not required, they should still do it. So, can you check to see if they're planning on it?
Certainly.
Thank you. And then, my other question is kind of a bigger question, but, so the way I look at it is, the zoning act happened a long time ago, and we're still trying to get it into the 21st century. But our official plan is really, was the new and improved shiny document. So, when we took a big bird's-eye view, as we like to say at the city, of what we wanted in this place, it was mixed use. So, I'm struggling, because there's no mixed use here. It's just people living, is that correct?
There's no commercial uses proposed.
Right. At all. Okay. And then, I know that we have to dig through all these documents for traffic and shadow, but would you mind doing a quick little update for us? Because I, one of the biggest concerns I'm hearing from people in Ward Seven are around traffic, and the amount of cars that will be coming in and out of the building.
The traffic study is still under review by city staff. I can highlight some of its conclusions, if that's what you're seeking. I can also note that the region of Waterloo not only did not require a traffic study, but has declined to review the traffic study that was submitted.
Why did they do that?
They have a threshold by which they require and review traffic studies, in terms of the number of trips generated, and this does not meet that threshold.
So, there's so few trips coming out of these two proposed buildings, the region's not even going to look at it? Is that what you're saying?
By regional standards, yes.
Right.
But we are still looking at it.
But the city is.
Absolutely. So, the project will generate, so the 156 trips in the AM peak, so that would be your morning peak.
Over three hours? Is that right? Over three hours?
Between 7:30 and 9:30 usually.
Two hours. Okay.
And 190 trips in the afternoon peak. In terms of the intersections in the area, they were looking at John and Park, John and Caroline, John and King, and all of those intersections operate at either a level of service A or B currently. In terms of 2026, which is the future background, so not accounting for this particular development, but only background growth, they would still operate at level of service A and B, speaking of John and Park and John and Caroline. In terms of this, what this development will mean in background, plus this development in 2026, John and Park and John and Caroline will not change, so they will still operate at high levels of service. John and King will operate at a level of service C, where the grades are A through E, if counsel recalls.
So, average?
E being the worst.
Yep. You said C, though, right?
C. And the after, and it will operate, the actual access in and out of the site, onto John, onto John Street, will operate at level of service B in 2026. So, nothing worse than a C.
Right. Which my son wouldn't get away with in grade four, but anyway. So, my other question is, these are proposed. 155 hasn't come online yet, and neither has the brick. Both of those have been approved. How do we factor in those buildings when we're looking at, you know, an extra 78 cars over rush hour? So, like, one in a titch, a minute?
So, as part of city staff's review, we would expect that this traffic study would have accounted for those projected trips. So, they should be accounting for the brick, 155 Caroline, and any other proposed developments, or at least approved developments in the area.
Okay. I was going to ask you about the shadow study, but I'm assuming Carol's got that in hers? No? But we're looking at it? You can speak to it? Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Counselor Durrell, did you have any other questions, or? Okay. Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Chair Freeman, and Counselor Durrell, happy to make sure I wasn't going to step on any of your questions by letting you go first. So, I'm going to pick up on the mayor's line of questioning, for the most part, around the privately-owned public space here. Are there any examples in the city of Waterloo where we have done a privately-owned public space through development to date? I'm happy for Mr. Rapp to answer that instead, since he signs all the things.
He appears to have an answer ready. We have actually, over at the Beryl Yards, it is all, it looks like it will be public roads, but really, it's private roads. There will be open space. We've taken agreements that allow for the public to access it, so it will function, it will seem like it is public space, on top of the parking structure when it's completed over there, but it will actually be owned by, it's common element, by the condominium corporations. So, that's an example where it has happened. And I'm sure we have others, but that's the one that jumps to mind right now.
I know we've had conversations in Northdale Long Walkways around a preference for ownership rather than easements, which is not too dissimilar from that, so just curious, since I hadn't been around this table for any of those being done in the last number of years. So, I suppose my question, Trevor, on that, is how important we view the overall accessibility and visibility of such spaces when considering applicant's requests for those? Given, as you mentioned, there's really only one at-grade access to this, and the rest of that is behind a wall and up some stairs. So, I'm wondering if you have a comment on that? And I'd suggest, as part of, you know, staff's review, to consider whether the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee may be a useful point of contact to provide input into counsel on the appropriateness and accessibility of this proposed privately-owned public space.
So, through you, Chair Freeman, Counselor Henry, if we are to assume it as effectively parkland or park space, then we should evaluate it as though it were going to be given to the city of Waterloo. So, we would hold it to the same standard.
I think that's certainly, you know, important for us to think of. I hear Mr. Rapp speak of a pop that is not yet constructed, because the parking structure is still underway, but I know that the, you know, the Beryl Warehouse Park in front of the Seagram Lofts, though publicly-owned... though publicly owned, public space, at-grade, abutting on three sides, publicly owned property is something that many residents don't know is actually a public park and function as a public park, and that's visible at-grade and from the street. So that's in the back of my mind as I read any future reports and think about the request from the applicant, so.
Any other questions for the planner staff? No, thank you so much, Trevor. So, sorry, I'm just making notes here, so I've got my notebook out. The first delegation is Ms. Weeby from MHB C Planning, welcome Carol.
Good evening Chair Freeman, Mayor Jaworski, members of committee. I am here this evening on behalf of 696-5083 Canada Inc., who are the owners of the property. And we have been working on this site for a number of years and are pleased to finally be able to present these plans, both to council and to the public. And we really are interested in receiving feedback this evening, this is the first of two public meetings. And we're looking forward to getting comments, questions at this point. And I should also mention that we are also interested in having an open house and some further consultation with the neighborhoods. We wanted to present these plans first so that we could incorporate any of the comments that we hear from this evening, go back and regroup with the project team, and then present those at a subsequent open house or neighborhood meeting. So that's the intent of what we intend to do. I've got a couple of, and there will be a bit of overlap with Mr. Hawkins' presentation, but I wanted to show some of these oblique angles because I think what this really illustrates is the location of this property in the context of really what I call the, you know, the reurbanization corridor. And you can see that King Street is on the left-hand side of the screen, and then we have Park Street on the right-hand side of the screen. And the most obvious building in closest proximity is the Sun Life Office Tower. And then you can see 144 Park and the Bauer Buildings. But you, what really shows clearly on this, on this image is that there is already a fair level of development along this urbanization corridor. And the site in question is also midway between the two Ion stations. And you can see the one in front of the Grand River Hospital further south on King. And actually, this one in reality is actually tucked in behind the Bauer Building. But we wanted to just, you know, put the label there so that you can see it's actually here. So this site is certainly well within walking distance of the Allen Station and also not that far away from the hospital station. As Mr. Hawkins indicated, this site is located within the Urban Growth Center, both in the region's official plan, in provincial policy documents, and within the city's own official plan. So sites that are located within the Urban Growth Center are identified to accommodate the majority of future development and considered ideal locations for re-urbanization. And of course, with the Ion and the LRT coming up King Street, the desire and really the hope is that this level of intensification will follow the investment that's been made in rapid transit. Here's another view looking north, so what you can see, here's the site. But what you can see, and again, you really see the deflection that King Street takes when it gets to this point at William, and then it veers off on this angle. But you can see the barrel yards here. So again, what this image clearly shows is that this site is well positioned and well located in this very long and linear reurbanization corridor. And again, it's well served today by certainly bus rapid or bus transit, and the intent is that it will also be served by future LRT. And the other important aspect that I think is worth noting is that the introduction of additional residential intensification in this location will help to support all of the businesses that are in the core. And it will help to bring more people within easy walkable distance to the businesses. And also for the offices that are already located in the core and hopefully future office development in the core, it's important that we provide, you know, walkable, complete communities. And so there has certainly been a strong interest in residential redevelopment in the core. And that is, again, helpful to both the other segments of the core, both in terms of the office and commercial development. As Mr. Hawkins said, and this is really a chart form of what he outlined, the site is currently zoned, and I should point out, part of the request of this application is for a density bonus. And the official plan allows through Section 37 provisions of the Planning Act for density bonusing to be considered. So the official plan already contains policies that allow for that, so we don't need an official plan amendment. Notwithstanding that, we do need to address it through the zoning bylaw amendment. So the site is currently zoned MR 25, we are working within that framework. It allows for the apartment buildings and allows for buildings up to 25 stories in height. And we are changing how the density is measured or how it's calculated. Under the old zoning bylaw, it was measured in units. Under the official plan, the density is measured in bedrooms. And we're seeking to increase that density from the 750 bedrooms per hectare to the 903, and I'll go in that in a little bit more detail. The setback reductions that are identified on that chart, and I think this is important, I want to emphasize that, relate to the podium only. The towers all meet the zoning regulations. There's no request for reduction in the setbacks for the towers. So they all meet and in many cases exceed the setback. So really, the part of the building that is most visible, that will be the highest part, exceeds the setback requirement. So it's the parking podium, and again, only in a few locations. And that will become a little bit more obvious when we get into the graphics. So the proposed development, there's two towers. The tower at the corner of King and John is proposed to be 20-story towers. And the second tower, which is really kitty corner on the site, is 21. And they're combined through this shared podium. But what's important is that the Tower 1, the main entrance is at grade, and all of that ground floor space is livable space. None of the parking that is proposed for this building within the podium itself is utilizing the ground floor of the tower. So the main intersection, as you can see on that lower image, really is the main entrance into the site for pedestrians. And it will provide that strong street presence at the intersection. And you can just see on the left-hand side of that bottom slide, I think Mayor Jaworski, you were asking about the stairs leading up. So the site is really, it's almost like a walkout. So you, you know, if you know a walkout lot, the basement starts to come out of the building as the landslides away. So it's a similar situation. The site is quite high at the south end, and then it drops. So part of that podium is totally buried, and part of it comes out of the site midway point. But rather than extend that podium all the way to the intersection, it was essentially cut off and that the residential tower is positioned at that south corner so that it is livable space and it will provide that entrance into the site. And there is this new, I'll call it public park or public square, we're proposing the civic square. And really, the main reason for introducing the idea of this public square is because of the heritage building. There's going to be a lot of care and effort being made to restore and retain that building. And in discussions that we had with heritage staff, there was the thought about making it more accessible to the public. So that was really the, sort of the impetus for bringing this idea forward. Here's a site plan, and again, the air, this is the existing heritage building. And it's actually located just about in this location today. So it will actually have to be lifted up off of its foundations. It will have to be moved to probably the back part of the site. The whole front part will be excavated. There will actually be three levels of underground parking at this point. The building will be slid back and put on a new foundation. And then this back part will be excavated, and the balance of the underground parking will be built. So it's quite a complex undertaking to do that. But this whole area that I identified here, this is what is being proposed for public access. And this entrance here is at grade, so people can enter here and have full access to the square from this site. Or further south, you can see the stairs coming along here. As Mr. Hawkins indicated, the main entrance to the parking, it comes off of John. And then there is another drop-off and pickup for Tower Number 2 from this location. And when this property was severed a number of years ago, there were easements that were secured across this part of the private part of Caroline so that access to the second building can be obtained. But the main pedestrian access is intended to come off of this intersection. And then there's interconnected links between the two towers during inclement weather. And you can still get to both of these buildings through the underground parking. I just want to spend a little bit more time talking about the cultural heritage considerations that went into this site because the existing building, and you've probably driven by it many, many times and haven't really noticed it. But this building is on the city's, it's listed on the city's heritage inventory. And the reason that it's identified is that the gentleman that lived here, his name was George Wanganas, and he was the first general manager of the Mutual Life Assurance Company. And he actually oversaw the creation of the original office building, the heritage building. So there is an importance between the location of this house and the office. He lived very, very close to where he worked. And so in the consideration of the heritage impact assessment, it recommended that the location of this building stay as close as possible to the original location. And so what we wanted to be able to do was to create this upper terrace or upper patio at a level grade. Right now, the house is here and it slopes down. There is still a retaining wall along King, not as high as what's proposed. But the idea is we want to create this flat surface, this upper terrace, and be able to put tables and chairs and meet, create a real meeting place. And you can see that we have a number of these large raised planters. Again, those have all been positioned to sit above the structural columns of the underground parking so that they can take that extra load of the weight of the planters. But in the feedback that we have received to date from staff was that they wanted to ensure that there was the ability to have some trees and have some vegetation to create for some shade if this is to be used as a, you know, as a public square. And there really aren't a lot of public squares along this section of King Street. The first public park is at William. There are those two small parquettes that are located on either side of King Street at William. So there really isn't in that stretch from here all the way to really up to the BIA. It's what I call the, you know, the uptown commercial area. There aren't really any other public spaces. So what we're trying to do is to create some public amenity space sort of at the south end. I just want to go back, the other, no, I won't. The other thing I wanted to mention, and you may see this on your screen, is that there's a line that runs along here with a series of bicycle images. So this whole area on Tower 2, the entire ground floor area from this wall all the way over is a bike storage and a repair facility. So that residents living here will have easy access to both bicycle storage. A lot of times, they're in the lower levels of the parking garage. But this is at grade, they can come in off of King. There's a roll-up door, and there's a whole repair area set aside for bicyclists. Again, keeping in mind that this is within the uptown, we want to encourage alternative modes of transport. So as I said, the official plan allows consideration of bonusing for density. And some of the criteria that are outlined in the city's official plan indicate that at least 50% of the parking should be underground, superior outdoor amenity areas, functions as a public space for the community at large. In addition, improvements to city parks or public spaces, adaptive reuse of cultural heritage resources. And those are all elements that are being incorporated into the development. And some of the other criteria that are to be evaluated is, is the site suitable for the density in terms of parking, landscaping, and other site-specific requirements? Is the increase in density compatible with the planned scale and character of the surrounding neighborhood? And are community services, infrastructure, and transportation impacts issues adequately addressed? And as Mr. Hawkins indicated, there's been a number of studies that were included with this that will have addressed all of these, and we can certainly elaborate that in more detail when we have further meetings with the neighborhood. So in conclusion, this development is consistent with both provincial policy statement, conforms to the growth plan. It fulfills the policy objectives of both the regional official plan and the city of Waterloo official plan. In terms of implementing the intensification policies, it provides for an efficient use of land, contributes to the range of uses within the uptown, provides market support for the non-residential, commercial, and office uses. It's compatible with the surrounding uses. It's pedestrian-oriented, transit-supportive, and will provide streetscape enhancements. We're proposing a new public amenity area for the uptown. And it will maintain and restore an existing cultural heritage resource and improve public access to that resource because right now it's not accessible to the public. And it will implement the density policies for the official plan in terms of the heightened density bonusing and is in conformity with the official plan. That concludes my presentation, and I'll do my best to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counselor Durrell.
Thank you, through you Chair Freeman. Thank you, Carol, much appreciated. This is actually the perfect slide for me to ask my question about the wall along John Street. So if I'm looking at the people, it's going to be at least eight, eight feet? How high is that?
I will answer, but Mr. Vilmer will also, because he has a whole video, and he'll go into that a little bit, but I just want to get this mouse working. So at the highest point here, this is about 10 feet. And then it rapidly declines as the sidewalk slopes upward. So you're seeing this at its highest point.
Right, so at 10 feet, and then there's a little bit of grass there. How much grass before we go to the sidewalk? Proposed? Sorry, I'm making you dig here.
That's okay. I think it's about a meter?
One meter. Okay, so the reason why I ask that is if you're the average height of somebody who's, let's say, 5'5", that wall is double your size, so you're standing beside a wall. And so, you know, this is one of our premier corners in uptown Waterloo. And so, you know, this is one of our premier corners in uptown Waterloo. And proposing a wall alongside of it is something that, I'm going to stop my sentence there, Madam Clerk. I'm going to stop my sentence there. So my other question is, in the official plan, it calls for mixed use, and we had our city planner talk about it. Why did the, does this proposal not look at commercial uses when you're on the King Street, which is our major street in uptown, and you're beside an LRT stop? What was the thinking behind not having commercial?
There was actually a fair bit of market research undertaken for this development. And the feeling was that, given that it's at the southern limit of the, and really the emphasis was to concentrate more the retail further north along King Street. And there was really a desire by the owner to maintain the residential primarily within this development.
You said you'd speak to some shadow for me as well?
Yes, I don't have them in my presentation. My apologies. And I don't, but I can tell you, I have the shadow studies here. During the summer and the fall periods, there's virtually no impact on any of the residential uses surrounding that site, even the residential properties on the other side of King. I'm looking at them right here.
And Mary Allen?
Pardon me?
Mary Allen you're talking about?
Well, even though actually just, they don't even, they don't even extend for the full depth of the properties on the other side of King.
Okay.
So the shadow in the June only extends halfway into the depth of those lots on the opposite side in the afternoon, which is really the, you know, where you get the most shadow impact. During the afternoon, in the height of summer, the shadows are very, very tight. And most of the shadow actually falls on the lawn in front of the Sun Life Building or on the parking lots surrounding. So in terms of the, in the March and in December, where we have the longer shadows, those shadows do extend across King Street. But again, the towers are fairly tall and slender, so the shadow does move fairly quickly. You don't have a long shadow that stays in one location. So the shadows do move fairly quickly. But in just looking at the time when people are outside during both the summer and even into the fall, into the September, the majority of the shadows either fall on commercial or parking lots and very minimal impact on any of the residential properties in the area. And I can make, I know staff has-
Yep, it's all online. So I guess if I want to know how, why the staircase is going up, is that something to ask the architect? I know the architect is coming up next.
Yes.
Okay, great. So maybe I'll save that one for them. And then is that it? I think that's it for me. I know as soon as I click this off, oh, I know. Okay, so pardon me. I'm sorry. That's okay. Apartment or condos? Do you have any idea what you're thinking about in this case?
At this point in time, the plan is that these would be rental. These would be rental apartments. And again, to, I think the barrel yards have been very successful. And the idea is to provide an alternative location for rental housing. Most of the development in the uptowns recently has been condominium. And so the intent is that these would be rental accommodation.
Did you have any other questions? Counselor Whaley.
I think you have a couple of questions, some that have been already asked by Counselor Durrell. So I assume that's the case, but I'd just like to answer the question answered. Is there going to be city publicly-owned sidewalks on King Street and on John Street?
Yes. Would you like me to go back to the site plan?
I assumed that was so, but it wasn't really that clear in some of the pictures.
Yes.
But there are city-owned sidewalks.
There are city-owned sidewalks along King, and this is where the city sidewalk is along John. So this area where you see all the decorative pavers along here, this is all at grade, but that is all private property.
I just saw so many steps and wondered if there was going to be city-owned sidewalk with steps as well. Right now, it's a flat sidewalk.
No, the sidewalk along King, if you've walked up this area-
Many times.
There's a very noticeable slope to the sidewalk. That will remain.
So if you could just hold this picture here for my next question. I'm trying to get an understanding about the distance between the curb on King Street and the front face of the building, not the podium, but the building itself.
So this part-
I think five meters is what the current law is, or current bylaw.
Yes. So to this, so this is the property line, and there's the daylight triangle that we have to take into account. But this part of the tower is about just over five meters, just over five meters. And this part of the tower is also at the five-meter setback, which is what the bylaw requires.
And my final question, there's so many tall buildings in the neighborhood. A real triumph for those visionaries that saw this as a part of the ion dream, that they're going to have all these buildings around a stop and people would move in. But what I wonder about, and lots of people wonder about, is the cumulative effect of all the parking needs. Your building, you're going to do your best to, you know, to figure out what the ratio and the rate issue for your building. But this cumulative effect of all the buildings, they all seem to, you know, just squeak under the line in terms of qualifying, but the cumulative effect, one would think that there would, is there any thought or any work being done that you don't have to try to understand why, you know, there's parking headaches now and that this might make things worse?
Are you asking me if I'm aware of any macro studies?
I didn't want to make it too easy on you tonight, Carol.
No, I know. I wasn't expecting, I wasn't expecting that. Are you asking me if are there any macro studies that are looking at the cumulative impact of? So the traffic study, and to a lesser extent, the parking study, does take into account all of these developments that are either have built or underway or have been approved. So they do take that into account. And I think anecdotally, what I have heard through a number of the traffic engineers who work a fair bit in Waterloo region, is that the amount of parking and the amount of traffic that's actually generated from most of these developments is actually much less than even the modeling predicted. Because people think that they need to continue to operate the way they always have when maybe they had two cars or they were, they drove everywhere. But when they move down here, they realize that it is actually very convenient. So the first thing that goes is the second automobile. So they're now operating with one car. And they find that it's much easier to walk to a lot of the places in the uptown. So has there been a study to do that? Not in the City of Waterloo. But I know that the City of Kitchener, they just completed a comprehensive parking implementation strategy for the city as a whole, retained paradigm, transportation to undertake that. And that's what the findings were for that study in the City of Kitchener. And I have no reason to think that it's dramatically different for Waterloo. So what they are finding is that with a lot of the intensification, that the parking and the traffic demand is actually lower than even what the studies predicted. So it is, it is working. And I can only guess that when the trains are actually running, there's an added incentive for people to also consider that mode of transport to get around, so.
Did you have any other questions, Counselor Whaley? Next on my list is Mayor Jaworski.
Thank you. Through the chair, visitor parking. Where is that?
Well, interestingly, the zoning bylaw, as it exists today, 1108, doesn't require visitor parking. But that's not to say that there isn't visitor parking here. And I want to clarify a point that came up about the surface parking, because the bylaw does require 10%, there has to be surface parking. And one of the key design considerations of this project was to minimize the amount of surface parking. There's a lot of surface parking right next door and, as we know, on the other side of Union. So there was a great deal of care that went into trying to hide a lot of that parking. There are the 11 parking spaces that are surface, but there is additional visitor parking in that upper level of P1. So it is, it is accessible. And then the balance of the parking in P2 and P3 and sort of that back part of P1 is cordoned off. But there is additional visitor parking. It's not just the surface parking that comprises the visitor parking.
Thank you. And then of the house, the old house there, the heritage home. My understanding is the intention is to try and do something as the outdoor area as public space, but the functionality of the home itself will be private to the condo? Or is that there are some aspects of the house that are also public?
That, I, that hasn't been totally determined. Certainly, the restoration of the building focuses on the exterior and the relationship of this to the, to the office, to the former Mutual Life Building. And that was why we wanted to make sure that the public had access to the building, could see. And there will be commemorative signage and explaining who Mr. Wenganas was and the relationship and why the building has been restored. With respect to the inside of the building, it will have to have repairs done, no doubt about it. It is primarily intended at this point in time to serve as amenity space for the residents here. But we're exploring other opportunities where it could be made available for certain events. But we're just in the exploratory stages of that.
Thank you. And then finally, on the density bonusing request, what is the actual unit slash bedrooms that, the excess that you're looking for?
The total number?
Yeah.
Well, the total number of bedrooms, just let me get my chart here.
Yeah, just the differential that would be permitted and what you're looking for.
Under the bedrooms, we would be able to have 388 bedrooms, and we're asking for 468 bedrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Henry.
Thank you, Chair Freeman, and thank you, Carol, for the details. Mayors and Counselor Durrell have covered off a number of what I had on my list. But picking up on the heritage structure, I think what I'm hearing so far is that by public access to it, it's public access at this point to the exterior, particularly the east-facing exterior, I presume, based on the delineation of private versus private-public in terms of the space.
Yes.
And I'm hearing that you're considering other potential uses in there. I would suggest that that is useful to consider public access inside such a useful structure, particularly as the city is considering removing perhaps public bookable space at King and Allen as part of a broader redevelopment and consolidation of those facilities, that there could be increased demand that that could support, which could be a community benefit. That may be, may be helpful. I'm not sure how everything on the proposed Section 37 list will be viewed by staff. I have some ideas, but it might be useful to consider. So in terms of, in terms of cycling access, for some of that, which you mentioned is coming off of King Street into a actual ground floor rather than tucked away in the middle of the parquet that nobody knows where to find and is a pretty horrible place for cyclists to normally end up in buildings. So I see the benefit of doing that. What I wonder about in terms of accessibility for that mode on this site is that King Street isn't an identified sort of cycling corridor by the region, nor is there any cycling facilities on that street in the region's eminent wisdom. There is some meandering lines that aren't actually bike lanes on and off on King Street. So in terms of access, I would wonder how folks from the Iron Horse Trail would most directly be able to access some of this site. I can imagine the spur line folks may come at it in this kind of direction. But I would look for some further consideration on making sure that the site is as fully accessible. It sounds like you're trying to make the, you're trying to honor the bike by giving it decent space, and I just wonder about the accessibility of that.
I can also elaborate a little bit more. So the main bicycle storage facility is, as I said, on the ground floor of Tower Two, and it's accessible at grade from King. But there is also, there are bicycle spaces along here, and there is also the ability to get into the at-grade, again, into that P1 level. And we have space in that P1 level for additional bicycle stalls as well down here, so.
And I trust that through the other public meetings that you're proposing with the neighborhood and the open house, that those could also be useful opportunities to talk about what design of, say, a privately-owned public space might look like in terms of benefits. I mean, I don't want to try to speak for Counselor Durrell's residence, but I imagine there might be some comments about what would be useful and what wouldn't be useful, both there and in any retaining wall that might be facing the street to more broadly enliven public-facing spaces. So most of those weren't really questions, but were things that I look forward to hearing more about later, rather than comments, which I can't provide.
I'll take it as advisement, yes.
And next on my list is Counselor Burke.
And largely, my questions about the heritage house have been co-opted by others, but that's okay. Because I really do find that portion of this fascinating in how we can pull together that public space and then this interesting and iconic building and have people walking by know that this is a public space. That's an interesting point, because I think most people, as they walk by this, would go, oh, look, there's a nice place for the people who live in the apartment to sit. And it has virtually nothing to do with us. So I wonder, I wonder if there are ways that we can signal that and that we can perhaps make that a welcoming public space? Because, to be honest, right now, it looks to me like here is a wall, and the people who live inside this wall can use this space, and the people who are outside this wall can't. So to me, it's got to be a lot more welcoming and more obvious that this is a, this is a space for you to come in and share.
I had some questions. What is the surface of that space facing King Street in front of the new house location, the proposed public space?
Yes. These are all paver stones that will sit on top of the roof deck. So they're hard surface. These large planters will either be modular or poured in place. They'll be quite large so that they can accommodate a root, a root ball for trees. But this is all paving, decorative paving, stones.
Do you think that there's any way to add more greenery to that space?
Well, this area here, we've identified that. And again, we're in the very early stages of the design, and we didn't want to get too far into design and then people say, oh, you know, you've designed it all. But these are really, we know where the trees have to go because they're dependent on the structural components underneath. But we've identified these areas here for part of a green roof, so it would have greenery on there. There is the ability to soften up some of this. But we really wanted, we have some tables here. We really wanted this to be more of a public square, more of a meeting place where people could sit at the table, sit at the benches. And so, I mean, there's lots of opportunities to consider softer treatments as well.
Yeah, I just, looking at the current site plan for that space, combined with the wall on King Street, it, you know- the wall on King Street, you know, we have a very concrete public space, but it's programmed, and that's what brings people there. This public space looks like it could use some more landscaping. So if you could consider that in your next application, I think that would be great. And my next questions are around the King Street facade. So the setback, so that pedestrian realm, like typically, what I have seen in our urban design guidelines around a pedestrian realm wouldn't necessarily support a 10-foot wall that's just a meter off the sidewalk. And that looks like street-facing curb, is that right? Curb-faced sidewalk?
Along here, I believe so. Now, this, you can see from this photo, this was the most current one we could find. It doesn't actually show the finished.
So I'm just thinking, if you've got curb-faced sidewalk and you remove snow and you've only got a meter of green space, as a pedestrian, I just don't understand how that creates a pedestrian realm.
I just want to clarify, when I mention that height, it's only for a short distance. And I think when you see the flyover that Mr. Vilmer has, that might provide a little bit more visual of what it will look like. We actually have some images of walking up King Street.
Well, maybe in his flyover in the future, you could put a meter of snow on the landscape side and have that three feet high and let me know how that looks. I think the other question I had was back to the mixed-use question and why that decision was made in lieu of the fact that you're trying to create a public space. And what brings people to a public space? Oftentimes, it's that mixed-use component. And so I'd like more information around that. Where the transportation is concerned, I wondered whether, I know you have a parking justification study. I haven't had a chance to look at it. And perhaps that study may respond to this question, which is whether or not they've done any analysis of the current lots that exist adjacent to this one to see whether or not the ratio of spots per stalls versus our bylaw actually demonstrate what you suggested, which is that the parking rate is substantially less. I know that they did a similar study in Kitchener to support something like that, and I just wondered if one has been done for this piece. Perhaps that's in that parking justification study.
They did look at it, and I think Mr. Hawkins also indicated that if, and we didn't go into great detail, but the draft zoning by law that's out for discussion right now, if that was to be approved in its current form, we would have a significant surplus of parking. So the trend is certainly to try and reduce the parking. Again, we don't want to oversupply. We don't want to provide more parking than is needed. We don't, I don't think that's useful for anybody. And in some ways, you almost, you have to wean people off of the automobile. And by providing enough parking that you feel is going to satisfy market demand, but not too much, is that balancing act. But the parking study did conclude that this parking ratio was still sufficient.
Thank you.
And the other thing, we have talked, and I don't think we've landed on a final decision, but we've talked about making spaces available for car share as well. So again, there's another opportunity to reduce that overall demand for parking stalls. You provide two or three car share spaces that are usable for everybody, and they do get used.
My other question was, your target market for this property, do you have a target market?
They actually identified two key target markets. One is sort of younger professionals that are looking to live in the Uptown, aren't really interested in living on the outer edges of the city. So that's certainly one segment of the market. But as we've seen in a lot of the recent projects, a lot of people that are looking to downsize, that are, you know, looking to sell the house in the suburbs and move to the core. So both of those markets have been identified. And again, there's, the majority of the units in these two buildings are larger units. They're two-bedroom plus den. So they make up the majority of the units. So again, trying to cater to a broader demographic, and there may even be the take-up of some families in this building, and that's certainly the desire, so.
And then I just wondered what consideration the team has given to the urban design of that wall and how that meets with our design guidelines.
As I said, these are the preliminary plans, and we're certainly open to working with your staff and hearing comments from the public. So that's certainly something that we, to take away that I'm hearing this evening.
Yeah, it would be helpful to know whether or not there's a possibility that that could actually be pulled back so it meets our setback requirement. Was there any other questions, Councilor Durrell?
I was just going to say thanks. That was 45 minutes on the hot seat. Well done, Carol. I think it's been 45 minutes, has it been? Yeah, all right. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. Thank you very much. So the next registered delegation we have is Mark Villamere from SRM Architects.
Thank you, Chair Freeman, Mayor Dvorsky, council members and staff. This animation that you see playing right now is three minutes long, so I'm just going to let it loop while I talk about a few of the items, and then I'm happy to, one thing you'll note about the animation, we don't have the LRT represented in here and all of its overhead wires, but to give you context. So the towers are spaced, they're spaced staggered to mitigate obstructive views for all the units. All the units are on the four faces of the towers. The development has enhanced the level of design to complement the landmark sites of sunlight. The building elevation is designed consistent, so even though there's two separate towers, it is technically one design, one development. So the development consists of contemporary materials that relate to enhance the surrounding character. So really, you're looking at architectural precast, that'd be that center black piece in the middle with punch windows, a lot of glass, a lot of spandrel, and composite metal paneling. The balconies wrap all four corners of the development, which is actually one of the design intents of the development. Here, what you're looking at is access off of John Street. And so we saw that car pulling out, that's the main vehicle entrance to the property. So you have eight surface parking at that corner. You have the additional three surface parking that are completely exterior off of the private lane off of John, sorry, Caroline Street. The main entrance here, as you can see, so we're prominently featuring, showcasing the building off of the corner of Kane and John. And so here, you have just a walking, a lawn John Street, and we're going to wrap around a corner, walking towards Kane Street right now. So the corner addresses both Kane and John with equal importance. We're going to be walking now towards our feature stairs that bring us from what we would consider to be Level P1 up to Level 1. And so when you get up here, this gets you to the public courtyard. So we have special paving, landscaping, seating. We're doing what we can to promote pedestrian interest into the public plaza of the property. So here, you're in the public area, and as it's been discussed already this evening, the private plaza is on the other side of this 217 house, and it's connected with the glass links that allow you to go from one tower to the other as well as enter the amenity space. It also acts as a natural barrier between the public and the private realm. What we've done to try and showcase this public area, because there is a grade differential on the property of roughly 10 feet, we've to try and minimize obstructions, we have glass guards and that sort of thing to try and increase the visibility from one level to the other. What you can see in this current rendering, just off of that private access, the hydro utilities, infrastructure, they're all located away from public view. So we have all the underground services, hydro vault is internal, switchgear underground. We also have, in addition to that, we have the loading, garbage enclosures are all located within Tower 2, and so they're all internalized. So all move-ins, all garbage are accessed off of the private lane off of Caroline Street. So you're not creating a traffic issue with move-ins and just garbage collection in general. So we've actually purposefully contrasted the elements and features of the design. So we have very modern buildings and modern links to what we're doing as the restored, exterior restoration of that heritage house. The inside obviously is up for debate in terms of what we're going to do in terms of programming for amenity space. The balconies, as you can see here, are partially recessed into the building form. Again, it's a factor of structurally how we're going to support it, but also how we can have really slender, elegant-looking buildings while having significantly large balconies for the units. The amenity spaces within the ground level, which is Level P1, which is the elevation we're at right now, the main amenity areas are two-story spaces. So we can provide a simple 10-foot floor-to-floor within the main level, but make it roughly 20-feet spaces inside. So it's very, very inviting and interactive with the public landscape. I'm completing my comments. Does anyone have any questions?
Councilor Durrell?
Thank you to you, Chair Freeman. How wide are those stairs that we just walked up?
The stairs are roughly six feet. We're limited by code in terms of how wide we can go before we need to reintroduce center guard or handrail. And so we'll certainly explore at maximizing the width as much as possible. One thing we tried to achieve with those stairs was to open it up. And we understand, we want it to be inviting, so we're trying to draw people into the property. So the more open we do the stairs, the less obstructions we have.
So explain to me why the 10-foot wall. There's actually a car parked on the other side of the wall, is that correct?
That is correct. So that corner of the property, that's not underneath the towers, under the parking deck.
We're coming around again.
Yeah, exactly. It's exactly that. It's to have the first Level P1 of the entire parking structure. So when we talk about 10-feet retaining wall, well, that is true, but it's only at that one segment, and then it tapers off as grade goes up the property. The other thing, too, that's worth noting, we're providing a bare-free accessible public plaza accessed off of the south end of Kane Streets on our property. If we were to tier that interior courtyard, we then just have a mess of ramps everywhere. And so that way, it's a one-level playing field between the public and the private area. We're trying to make it as very seamless between the two buildings in the site.
Did you ever look at putting stairs, you have stairs leading up, now I know you've got cars on the other side, but perhaps moving the cars back and doing stairs all along there, all along, I'm pointing, which you can't see, but onto King Street. So that, so I mean, I say this, I ask this question because there's been a number of buildings, one right across the street, the Cortez, the red, which is just at the corner of Allen and King, and it's become a thing where we're lifting up these buildings to put cars underneath it, but it's creating these massive barriers. And so when you walk down our main street, you always have something on the right side of you. It's not opening up. We've done all this work to create this inviting space, and then you round the corner to the most-used street in, like, King Street, and we've got this wall that takes us up. So I'm just curious, what kind of other things did you fiddle with when you were architecting it?
Sure. So through you, Madam Chair. So yes, we looked at stair opportunities. It's very tight, and so we have looked at stairs. The issue is, it's just a long run. And so it became inefficient as far as a site development, but we're very open to suggestions and working through troubleshooting this area, how we can open it up to be more inviting.
I appreciate that. So one of the things I didn't really get until I saw this was that the private space between the two buildings is, I guess, sorry, you'll have to go back, but it's over top of the garage, and it's shaded in this rendering, but is that just...
Yes, it's, this animation's taken at a specific time, just to showcase these areas. I do have graphics I'd be happy to share with you that show that other area at different times of day where it is fully eliminated.
So here it is, right there. So that's where everyone comes out between the two buildings to enjoy Uptown? That's their backyard-ish?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Council, any other questions for the delegation? So I had a couple. In the next presentation, I'd like to better understand the relationship on the urban design between this structure and the actual designated property, because the large building on the corner of King and Union is a designated heritage building. And I think it's important to understand how this structure either speaks to that, complements it, or doesn't. And I wondered about these stairs and why you didn't start them back way further back so that you actually had a bottom of the building. Like, I understand there's a parking garage there, but if the stairs had been moved way further back, then they wouldn't start at a 10-foot height. I mean, you'd maybe lose about four or five parking spots, but it just seems so incredibly impressive to have 10 feet there when you could have an enhanced entryway, you could have any number of things.
So, Madam Chair, to understand, so you're suggesting to take the stairs and shift them south along Kane Street to...
Yeah, like, to where it starts to get really narrow. And then the idea that Councilor Durrell had, where you could actually have stairs there and it open instead of a wall, I don't know. Like, I realize you'll lose some parking spots over that, but it just seems absolutely daunting what's there. That's not an opinion, that's just a concern. And yeah, like, I really want to better understand, maybe from staff down the way, their opinion with regard to the urban design of that King Street facade. I don't know, is there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. So our next delegation is Mr. Short Reed. Good evening, John. Thank you for waiting.
I live at the Bauer Lofts, and horizontally, I'm 50 feet from the streetcar stop. And it's a bit disconcerting this evening to see that 90% of discussion is about design details and not about the actual application, which is to take 15-foot side yards and turn them into 1-foot side yards. If you've walked along there, the sidewalks, I think about four feet, there's a railing along it. It now has a stone fence with wrought iron railings. So my request this evening is to just leave the zoning the way it is. There seems to be a foregone conclusion, which is probably based on the fact that for the last six or nine months, the developer and staff had been talking, kind of accepting, oh, they're going to have a bonus 135% on the number of units, that it's not unreasonable to have 305 units on a one-acre parcel, a little more than one acre. Those are all kind of swept into the... Those are all kind of swept into the background. What I'd like you to do is back up and say, do we really want this? Now, how do I turn the next slide? Hit any key? Yes. Uh, first thing is, should I have gotten a notice? I saw the little yellow sign, I walk every day, trying to stretch out my new hip, uh, down to Sun Life and around their grounds, and I saw the little yellow sign. And people in my wife's book club that meets tonight, where somebody found out about it, and they said, well, why didn't we get a notification? So, should we have received a notification? There's John Street, the cleaners, the pastry shop, and then our property. It's probably 150 feet max. There's only a numbered company, uh, but given the design, basic buildings, repetitive, 42 stories of eight units, uh, two-bedroom and one-bedroom plus dens, and as you know, dens often get used as another bedroom. And if you look at the economics of this, and this site, then it's sort of two people sharing a unit, working at the hospital or Sun Life, or three students come in at the, and the students are not unreasonable, because it is a rental property, it appears from the design and so on, 139 bike places, that it would be, and there's a streetcar stop right out there, two stops later, three stops, they get to the university. What's the nature of the building? We, I think that's been answered tonight, that it's for, it's a higher level of construction than what you would get on North, uh, King Street, north of university. As you understand, there's $400 a square foot, and there's $250 a square foot, and that determines the rental and how they're going to sell it to investors and what they're going to do with it. And as I mentioned before, 300 units, is that reasonable? I don't think it is. We've been over the design components of this now, but if you go to the zoning bylaw and you had 15 feet, your trees, your grass, any public benches and stuff would have been at-grade level off the sidewalk, they wouldn't be up sidewalk. There will be no at-grade grass, trees or green along King Street and Caroline, but in the views, there are some along John Street, but I'm not sure if that's in the boulevard or on the property. The wall is basically ugly. You may recall that the way we got into parking coming right up to the property line, we have a, we have 500 spaces in our building, the red has, I don't know, 50 or something, they come right up the property line, but they're all at-grade, they're not sticking up in the air two stories. It's proposed to have ground-level green space placed two floors up, and as you've discussed this evening, those spaces would not appear to be public spaces. It would not, in my view, as claimed, have any use by public, as it clearly will be for the development. The real problem I see in our neighborhood is cumulative impacts. One development with densities a third or 50% over, that's 130% if you do units, the developer likes to sort of cherry-pick between, they want the extra bedroom criteria, but they don't want the heights criteria. I find this totally unacceptable. Why? Is that what we want in Uptown? No green, canyons with strong winds, unattractive streetscapes, parking problems, access problems. The region hopefully will do a study and find out, since they cut out down to one lane on King, they put in all kinds of no-left turns, the capacity of those streets is way, way below what you would normally have. We have a couple of thousand parking spaces within a block and a half of this site. A lot of them, like the 600 and the Sun Life, when they get out, they all use the street. Already within one block of myself, there are, or will be, if this increased density, way above the targets given by the province and the region. You should be asking staff, is there really a need for further intensification? Or are we so far above the targets that we could forget that as a criteria? The area around the Bauer Lofts, the former Brick Brewery, as you know, has this kind of a design, podium up to the property line with parking. There are two adjacent properties, and we've heard this evening that the adult rec will probably go, that would be another 400 units if they went to this density. The fumar parlor sooner or later is going to go. Again, they're going to be, if we continue down the path we're on now, podium parking, sticking up above ground, two, three stories to the north. How close are they? Working on the plans for the Brick Brewery, if you applied the same criteria to the north, and you had long arms, like I have, two people standing on the balconies could touch. Then you come around the corner, and you have 144 Caroline, 155 Park, again, they're both three stories, parking right out to the property line. And then you get the Sun Life parking lot, squeezed between those two things is the rerouted Canada Trail. Again, raised parking right up to the lot lines. Proposed development north across, uh, John Street at King, you could put probably another 600 additional units if you went to this kind of a density. Now, that's right across John, there's now a couple of offices in there, there's a cleaner, and there's a pastry shop. Now, imagine that with two stories, three stories of parking above grade right out to the property line. So, the way development is going to go, if you continue down the road you're on now, trying to increase density well beyond the target, is that the Bauer Lofts will be surrounded on three sides by parking structures above grade right up to the property line, and that's what I think you should be discussing this evening. Usually, relief from zoning requirements is based on benefits to the neighborhood and the city, but all the proposed changes in zoning are negative, as far as I can see. Taking green space away from at-grade, putting it up two stories. You may have read the Uptown Vision study, which was for a green and pleasant place. In our neighborhood, there, you can walk around, and the only place where you'd find that space is on our development, the Bauer Lofts, where there's coffee shops and other places, where you can go in, sit down, get a meal from Vincenzo's, take it outside. There'd be nothing like that on this. There's no compelling need for more density, as we're well above the targets now. So, I'd like you to consider the cumulative impacts. You started down this road, what would it look like? It's fine to take one student housing development on King Street, north of university, but it's another thing if you go and there's two dozen of them, and that's what we're talking about, the cumulative effect. Do you think anybody had the imagination to understand what King Street would look like, when they were just approving one and worrying 90% about the design details and not, should they have that density? Should they have those setbacks? Yes or no? I don't see any offsetting additional benefits that would justify any kind of bonusing. Yeah. They're all negatives. You take away 15 feet, that can be planted in trees and grass, and replace it by a 10-foot wall with parking. So, I'm asking you to save the neighborhood. Uh, thank you very much. Any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Short Reed. Uh, Councilor Whaley.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Short Reed, and welcome back to council chambers. The developer's saying, we want some extra bedrooms, we want extra density here, and for that, right, we're going to put in a public, a public green space, a public space. So, if, coming from your, from your address over at the Bauer Lofts, or from the Brick or, or from the Caroline and Park buildings, uh, you would come from the, uh, north to the south to access this, uh, this green space, for you and all those other buildings to access that public place, is a big climb up, a lot of stairs to, to access it from, going from north to south to get to it. Uh, and then you get there, and you're surrounded by this building, these two buildings, is it your belief that, that this is just a sham, that it really is, uh, that's really not meant to be a public space, but in fact, uh, uh, amenity space for the, uh, for the apartment dwellers?
Basically, yes. I think all these design requests to you are so you can put more density on the one-acre plus of land. So, you make more money, you probably bought it with the basis that you could put so many units on. And, and why not, if council of the day has approved individual properties after individual properties without looking at the cumulative effect, why wouldn't you go for it? I would. But to, to try and say, taking away 15-foot side yards and replacing them with a wall, you climb up two steps, two, 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 uh, layers of steps to, to a space, which is paving stones with a few trees, and has the appearance like the one at 144 Caroline, of being for the people in the building who actually don't ever use it. You know, you might see one person there every month. It's just a way to say, okay, we can get a few less parking spaces than we need, we can get more, the heights are actually about 22 or 23, because they, they don't count the podium. It's just a way, having decided, well, let's go for the extra density, which I claim is not needed, the city and the region and the province already have exceeded in Waterloo the density targets by quite a bit.
Okay.
This is the way you get to it. So, these weren't design considerations where they set out to enhance the neighborhood, these were ways to accommodate getting more units on the one-acre side.
Thank you, Mr. Short Reed. Just, um, before we go to Councilor Durrell, I just want to see if there's any other questions for Mr. Short Reed. Uh, okay, like, but can, can I release him from the podium, or?
Oh, I just wanted to, to say to you too, I appreciate where you're coming from, um, and, uh, but at the same time, you understand it, an informal hearing, it's about asking questions and not giving opinions as, as the council, and so, our, what we're doing is trying to get a good understanding and talk to our staff about this, so that we, we know as we move forward. So, um, I just want to make that clear, so you understand where we're coming from.
No, I, I do understand that.
Excellent. I know, you used to be sitting in this very chair for Uptown, so...
Well, starting in 66, I was actually on the planning board and shared the planning board once, there was a separate planning board.
So, I'm just saying, when you, when you come here and tell us that you don't like...
I, I just made the observation, because sitting there for an hour, it suddenly struck me that all the questions, all the suggestions, the things you wanted looked into by staff and the other, were designed, they were second and third order in importance.
Mm-hmm.
The most important thing with your hearing is, do you give them the extra density? And what are the implications?
Right, so, questions around that are difficult to ask, so, I mean, just put yourself in our position.
I, I understand that, and I guess, I just came here to say, it's a cumulative effect.
Yeah, okay. All right.
When I go out the door of my condo in a couple of years, I'm going to be faced in three directions, nothing but parking structures.
Thank you, Mr. Short Reed. And, uh, Councilor Durrell, you had a question for staff?
Yeah, I had a question for staff, because I think it's important that people, um, that, uh, we have incredible planning staff that work for us here at the city, and, um, Trevor, uh, we've worked on a number of buildings in Uptown before, uh, have we ever worked in a silo where we haven't thought about the rest of the neighborhood, or the effects that it has, or cumulative? How do you, um, as well as the rest of our urban growth staff, um, uh, from our commissioner right down to the assistants, look at the impact on Uptown?
Uh, through you, Chair Freeman. First, we would, of course, take council's guidance as articulated in the official plan, so is the development consistent with the goals and objectives that councils establish, both generally speaking and specifically for the Uptown. So, that would be our, our main guidepost for a project like this, and then we would receive feedback from the neighborhood, and we would look at how this project fits in and, and with the objectives that council has for the Uptown. Is it consistent with those objectives? Does it offend them? Can it be improved such that it's better, a better fit?
Okay, and also, um, the one thing Mr. Short Reed brought up, um, that was, uh, I'd like to get some, um, I'd like to get some knowledge around is, uh, why did the barrel yards, uh, Bauer Lofts not receive notices? Have we looked into that? What's, what's going on there?
Uh, through you, Chair Freeman. I wasn't aware of that, but I will look into it and follow up with council.
So, what are, what, okay, yeah, I would appreciate that. And then the other thing I'd be interested in is, uh, Mr. Short Reed also mentioned that we are well beyond our target for density in that area. Can you give us some, uh, some insight into that as well?
Again, through you, Chair Freeman. I think that's something that we will have to assess, and we can articulate in the report for this file. I, I do note that those are, of course, minimum targets. It's not expected that we only achieve the minimum of that target. There is an expectation that municipalities strive to exceed the targets.
Thank you. We have another delegation, it's Ms. Dwyer. Thank you for joining us this evening.
So, good evening, Mayor Jaworski, council, city staff, and members of the public. I'm really grateful to have an opportunity to state my concerns regarding this development. I really do appreciate the efforts the developers are making to include some public space on this site, and also to preserve the historic building at 217 King South. That kind of thoughtful conservation of interesting buildings and integrating uses can lead to varied and much more interesting streetscapes in the downtown core. While I do understand the ways in which these towers fit the intent of the Waterloo's primary intensification node, it disturbs me to hear a request for density that is, no matter what metric you use, more than double that allowed by present zoning, and a third higher than even the new zoning bylaw would allow. Can I use the arrow key to go down? Yep. At the zoning bylaw review meeting on June the 5th, we were told that these updated regulations were meant to define density in the nodes and corridors and keep the neighborhoods There are many aspects to increasing density that affect the surrounding low-rise neighborhoods, but I want to focus your attention tonight on traffic specifically. I bring these concerns about increased traffic before you tonight as an individual resident of Uptown West, but Mayor Jaworski and Councilor Durrell will know from last week's update to Uptown West meeting that I do not stand alone. Residents there were heard loud and clear as they related incidents throughout the neighborhood of speeding, not stopping at stop signs, aggressive and rude driving, near misses for cyclists, tractor-trailers, and other non-appropriate vehicle use on the roads. I live on John Street West at Belmont Avenue, the intersection of the four forces of intensification, City of Waterloo, City of Kitchener, Region of Waterloo, and LRT planners. Their combined decisions regarding density and traffic management are seriously affecting the safety, livability, and... the safety, livability and character at that corner. Each body appears to make decisions without regard for the cumulative effect. And similarly tonight, yet another building proposal, this one four short blocks from this corner, asks for a massive density increase. Regarding traffic, the proposal states that intersection analysis of the 216 traffic volumes indicate that the boundary road network has ample capacity to support future traffic volume growth and further that site-generated traffic to the roadway system will have a minor effect to the operation of study intersections. We have heard this sunny traffic forecast proclaimed repeatedly with each and every tower proposal. Oh, sorry, we're getting next up here. There we are. Once again, there is a failure to take account of the significant cumulative traffic increase from the many current and pending developments. Mr. Hendry tonight mentioned the Ark property. There's the Dairy Queen property. I know that on Realtor.ca last year, I saw all the, all the little businesses on John Street opposite these new tower proposed, proposed towers were for sale as well. We know that there's lots, lots, lots more coming. And missing in action for me is the coordinator of plans. Who is responsible? Who is responsible when our streets are affected by a collision of decisions? The statistics from the May 217 traffic counts for Uptown West show us that John Street, here it is. Nope, that's not it. Sorry. That one. That John Street between Belmont and Essen has seen a 25% increase in traffic since 2012, when the City of Waterloo intensification really began. That translates to over 500 more vehicles per day on John Street alone, just where that arrow is pointing. While most Uptown streets saw traffic counts peak in 214, that was the year of the greatest disruption, Lower John Street counts have risen by more than 100 vehicles per day. Please note, I didn't mean 1,000, 100 vehicles per day since that peak. So here's the statistic. Traffic has increased throughout the day and on weekends too, but probably 75% of the traffic occurs between 7 and 9 and 4 and 6. And at this rate, Lower John Street is experiencing, and it's true, six cars per minute or a vehicle every 10 seconds at rush hour. Many of the homes here are within 15 feet of the roadway and this proximity to heavy traffic amplifies its presence. Furthermore, these latest 217 counts were taken at mid-block and they do not even reveal the additional tremendous impact of Kitchener cut-through traffic north and south on Belmont Avenue through the intersection and heading Uptown. The residents of the proposed towers will enter and exit onto John Street at King. They will soon join the others. The taxis will lead the way on the cut-through routes to Kitchener and Westmount, which run through the low-rise neighborhood and past this corner. The LRT has also had an impact on John Street traffic as the new traffic lights at King and John invite-through traffic and the no-left-turn restrictions on regional intersections such as King and Union and King and Allen, as well as a dedicated left-turn lane off King at John will funnel traffic up John and across the neighborhood. It is a grid and you can follow it wherever you want to go. John Street has always been one of the most appealing streets in the city. We speak about greenery Uptown. Here it is. Its tall trees provide a park-like setting for people who walk by daily from Sun Life and other businesses on Park Street. They're taking their lunch hour strolls in the neighborhood. And residents of the new towers walk in their pets morning and night. But nearly, nearly 2,000 vehicles per day is degrading the safety and livability for all of these people. The many cyclists and skateboarders, the elderly, the families with babies and young children, residents and the many pedestrians who walk here daily. Before one more isolated traffic study or density relief request is accepted, something needs to be done to divert traffic, cut-through traffic from Lower John Street and the low-rise residential neighborhood of Uptown West. I wish to remind council of the unfinished work of the Uptown West traffic study. That's the resolution that was come to at the end and it was passed unanimously here in these chambers. It was determined by this study in 214 that John Street West above Park, west of Park, is not and will not be a minor collector road. Coal Engineering recommended a traffic diverter at John Street and Belmont Avenue in every new scenario because they knew what was to come. The approval of these two latest towers will create one of the densest collections of residential towers in the region of Waterloo. I can't think of another area in the region other than the student accommodations, which is denser. It is time to make the necessary adjustment for a coordinated solution to preserve this neighborhood and its streets against the potential traffic infiltration and safety issues due to growth. That was the overall study objective of the Uptown West traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dwyer. Any questions for Ms. Dwyer?
I'd just like to give council the traffic numbers that were reported on, just to give you some context. Counters went out in May and if any of you saw, the numbers on Euclid were very, very high. Just for your context to understand, it was the day they closed Urban Caroline and our counters happened to be there that day. So those are not the actual numbers, just so you understand. When numbers flash up, I just want to give you some context behind them. And we also have all of the numbers from the May counts as well, which I'm happy to share with you. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you very much. At this time, I wanted to ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak to this application. If you raise your hand, you can have five minutes. So if you could please approach the podium with your name and your city of residence, please.
Thank you. My name's Anita Gaddy. And what else did you need to know? Sorry, I was.
Your city of residence.
I live in the city of Waterloo. I also live on John Street West. I work at Sun Life. I enjoy walking to that tower every day from my residence. It's a beautiful, under 10-minute walk. I feel very privileged to live in this area and I thank you for the opportunity to speak here. One thing I just wanted to note that I found very perplexing, so it's just a question that I have. The Sun Life building, as far as I know, I don't, I don't actually work in the tower. I work in the lower part of the building, but I believe the elevators go to the 19th to 19 floors. In the drawings and video that are shown, it appears that the Sun Life tower is 20%, 30% taller than the towers being proposed. I find that very misleading unless apartment heights of ceilings are much, much different than those buildings, which there may be, that may be a factor. So I'm just curious to understand that better, if that's actually to scale or not. I would also like to understand, I can't remember, I didn't write down the counts, but the number of units compared to the bedrooms didn't seem, the math didn't seem to work to allow the majority to be greater than two bedrooms. So I just didn't, I didn't understand how that math worked because it seemed like the number of apartments, units was less than, much less than double the number of bedrooms. So anyway, I, but I neglected to write it down. So I was just curious about that. I also would share the concerns of the other residents that have spoken tonight. I appreciate the analysis that they've done. I, too, am very concerned about the cumulative effects of traffic, of just the aesthetics of some of these, these buildings in terms of having parking structures that are above grade and that are just creating visually some, some very uninviting visuals on, on King Street and for, for us as residents living in the areas. And I think we do need to think very seriously about the combined impacts of all of this on our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council, any questions for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you very much. I certainly saw another individual. If you could approach the podium, please. Yep.
Steven Herzog from Elgin Street in Waterloo. And I just jotted down a few points here, some of which are rhetorical questions. Do we require developers to work on the?
Sorry, there appears to be something wrong with your microphone. So can I just trouble you to speak up? It's not you. I think that we're maybe having a technical difficulty, but I want everyone to be able to hear you.
Okay. Do we require developers to provide a report on loss of trees and green space when they're submitting a request? And also I'm concerned about the replacement of actual green space with hardscaping. And do we require developers to submit a report on wind study, wind effects? When I walk along King Street from Elgin to Laurier, I find it extremely windy at times and I'm concerned that that, that the part of King Street where this development is occurring is also going to become a canyon. Are there plans envisioned for Park Street to be required or widened to four lanes? Does staff feel that that will be necessary in the next 10 years? And then on the issue of retaining walls, I'm concerned that they tend to attract graffiti. The new development at King and James, as soon as the construction hoardings came off, there was already a little bit of graffiti on the concrete wall there. And with the historic house at 217 King Street, I'm curious as to what the interior is like now and if it would be appropriate to make it more of a museum-type building rather than, I'm not sure if they're planning to gut the interior or if it's in good shape right now. Since it is an historic building, it might be interesting to the public. Back to the retaining wall again. If, if I wanted to create a space that was defensible space, I think that's about how I'd do it, by putting up a retaining wall. I think that's an issue with the developer's request here. And I'm just not clear on what listing a building is as historic means. Is the developer actually required to retain the building or? Okay, I see a shaking head of no. All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I can assure you that staff have written down all of your questions, so we probably don't need to re-ask them, but I'm gonna ask, I'm just gonna look to Mr. Hawkins. Do you have all the questions? Yep. And Council Whaley.
I do have questions, staff.
Okay. By the way, I'd also like to thank Trevor. I was walking down King Street to Kitchener and saw the yellow sign and contacted Trevor and I thank him for sending further information. And I'd also like to thank Council Durrell for the, the meeting for the Uptown West residents. It was very well attended and she informed the residents about the upcoming developments. So thank you to both.
Thank you very much. So I don't see any further questions for the delegation, so I can allow you to have a seat and I'll turn to Council Whaley so he can ask his question of staff.
There's gonna be one more delegate.
Yeah. There definitely was another hand up. We just haven't got there yet.
Mr. Hawkins, the delegate had a really intriguing idea with respect to the, to the public space and the idea that the heritage building on the public space might have a public use, therefore really kind of cinching the deal with respect to it being, truly being a public building. And I just wanted to make sure that you got that in your notes because that's something that I think is really worth exploring.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Seeing none. I know that Kay had her hand up. And if I could just trouble you to say your name and municipality of residence.
I'm Kay Lg. I live on Fountain Street in Waterloo. I hadn't really intended to speak tonight, but a couple of things caught my attention and I realized I'm going to be repeating or reiterating concerns raised by a couple of other people. I know that tonight, when we get a development proposal like this, we can only look at what the applicant is asking for and, and review it and, and make decisions about that. And I, when I was looking at the slides earlier on, the corner of King and John is a real island of green. And when you think about it right now, there's two houses remaining there with a lot of mature trees and quite a variety of vegetation. And I was reminded of a Jane's Walk that happened earlier this year because as you know, among other things, I coordinate Jane's Walks for the city. And it was by one of environmental psychologists, Colin Alard's students, and talking about the, the research that has found that green spaces, in particular a variety of plant species, have the effect of lowering people's blood pressure and decreasing your heart rate, decreasing stress as you walk in an environment like that. In contrast, if people are stressed out and walk by cement and steel buildings or probably walls, structures, they experience an increase in stress. And so I noticed that one of the exemptions the applicant was asking for, or one of the requests, was asking that the roof garden be counted as part of its required green landscaping space. And when you look at what's already happened to that street with the current of levels of intensification, we really can't afford to get, to let any more green space go. As someone mentioned to me recently, comparing what it's like walking around in intensified Mississauga, which is a pleasant streetscape, but there's just no plants and no green space. And he, and he observed that really it's, the intensification's great, but people in those high-rises need a nice place to walk around. And it's good for their health, our health. And I think this, this concern points to something else that other people have raised, that we really need something more than just being able to respond to specific proposals. I think we need an overall vision, whether it's the Uptown vision or a central district plan, but I think council really needs to guide us in making that. Because as we intensify, there's more and more things that are coming out and we're trying to solve them one development proposal at a time. And it's really not working as well as I think we all would like. We've seen what's happened when we let the market forces take the lead in the past and I don't think we want to repeat some of those things. So I'd just like to reiterate those appeals that others have made.
Thank you very much. Any questions, council, for the delegation? Seeing none, thank you. Was there anyone else here this evening that would like to speak to this application? Okay, seeing none. If... If there are no more delegations, this informal public meeting is now concluded. Staff will review the issues and provide further reporting to council at a later date. Thank you very much.
...mention here, please sign the back, because the developer has indicated that they're interested in having a public meeting, so that's something that we can organize, maybe late November, sometime between November and January. Carol, does that work? So we'll be having a public meeting?
Thank you. In consideration of notice of motion given at a previous meeting, there's none. Notice of motion, none. Communications and correspondence, none. Regional information and correspondence, none. Unfinished business, council? Seeing none. New business? So I have a couple of things under new business, so it's our 150th anniversary update. So council met two times in October of 1867, and they created bylaw number 28 to assess the Village of Waterloo in the sum of 2/10ths of 1 cent in the dollar for county purposes, the sum of 1/10ths of 1 cent in the dollar for roadwork, the sum of 2/10ths of 1 cent in the dollar for general purposes, and the sum of 5/10ths of 1 cent in the dollar for school purposes. Other business included a reimbursement to Nicholas Killer for sheep destroyed and damaged by dogs be paid out of the funds derived from the dog tax. Nicholas Killer was one of the merchants hired to build the town hall and water tanks for extinguishing fires. There is also a motion by Jacob S. Ruse that hereafter no burial be allowed to take place within the municipality of the Corporation of Waterloo Village, except in Mount Hope Cemetery, and that the clerk advertised the same in English and German papers. And that was carried. Council met two times in October of 1967. A series of amendments to the official plan were proposed that day by Planning Director Brian Turnbull. Brian Turnbull ran and was elected as mayor, and he served from 1988 to 1997. These changes refined the downtown area of Waterloo as the area enclosed by the following: William Street, Willow Street, Herb Street East, Laurel Creek, Young Street, Waterloo Park, and Caroline Street. Section 5 was also reworded, and an additional statement added, so that the section read as follows: Apartment buildings will be permitted only within areas which are compatible to such a use, and only where adequate park and school facilities are available, or can be made available. The location of such apartment buildings and the regulations to ensure that adequate residential amenities are available will be controlled by the zoning bylaw. In new commercial buildings, not more than one dwelling unit per retail or service commercial enterprise will be permitted, with the exception that if this number is exceeded, residential standards would apply to all of the dwelling units in that building. And in addition, regulations pertaining to the one permitted dwelling unit will be set down in the zoning bylaw. That was carried unanimously. Immediately following World War II, the City of Waterloo underwent a period of rapid expansion and industrial growth. With the baby boom came a larger population, growing 424% by 1971, and a need for more housing and educational facilities. It was also during this period that the University of Waterloo and Wilford Laurier University, leading to a larger number of students and temporary residents. In addition to this, there was a great debate over the redevelopment of Waterloo Square and Waterloo's downtown core in general. Yeah, it's interesting, we recycle some issues for sure, but it's timely. Other business, council? I just had one, and that was just to remind everyone that the season of gemuclacite is upon us, and that starting on Thursday, we will be serving those that we share a municipality with in our mayor and council's luncheon in the public square. And if you're interested and available, the City of Cambridge will be doing the same thing on the Wednesday before our event. And I know that they always appreciate it when some of us travel beyond the 401 to share some time with them. And then of course Friday, you are all welcome to be present in the, in the center area of Kitchener for the official keg tapping. The next item is questions, council, any questions? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Durrell, seconded by Counselor Henry, all those in favor, that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.